Why the Board of Control? Because they're putting it forth to us. And then by the time you get done sitting down on the Board of Control, I mean, I don't know about you, but I've got a much better handle as to what's going on.
Well, that's true.
And that's why I like it.
That's actually true.
But maybe not. Maybe I'm not remembering.
Well, by the time they get it before the Board of Control, they all got a better idea as to what they're really doing.
Yeah.
And then any of us that sits in on that, like I said, thanks to those meetings, I'd come up here and know a lot better on what's happening.
That's true. That's true.
I don't know. After today, I don't know. I might just go hide. That's tomorrow morning.
That's right.
And I'm sitting there looking, oh, wait a minute. What is this? And I think I got through the first three pages.
Did you ever answer?
No.
Really?
He wasn't feeling good Friday with the doctors, and then he helped someone shovel the snow. Sat Monday morning. His father-in-law went in the house. He came out. He was dead in the snow.
Oh, my God.
Who's that?
Dwayne Lockhart, fifty years old.
See, I was smart. I stopped and shoveling yesterday. Well, God didn't. One Charlotte. Maybe indirectly.
You know, he was feeling dizzy and everything. Then he went and shoveled Saturday morning.
Decorations.
He went on bus.
Boom.
I wish he something off. He wouldn't go.
Are we running?
Before, you know, I don't know why he went out.
Are we running? I think so.
I went out and did my.
I just take it easy.
Well, I went out.
And then Scott over there.
Two hours, two hours and a half.
Yeah, I do, too.
And I don't, it's not physically hot. It's just cold.
Right. You know, I remember when I used to swim.
Oh, yeah. Man, I'm just too old. Yesterday, I had.
I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Tuesday, January 22, 2019, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of reflection.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Clear call to roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLoone.
Here.
Mr. Karren.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Pilat.
Here.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
Public comment. Anyone signed up? Okay, no public comments tonight. Moving on to Committee of the Whole. Letter A, Ordinance to Amend Section 4.0804 Parking Violation Fines. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you. As I understand it, I don't believe we have any fines in our codified at the moment. Any monetary numbers?
No, I think, well, that might be true. I think I talked to Chief and Mr. Lane earlier, and the reason for these codified ordinance changes is when we had Mayor's Court, we had fines in place that were different than the other jurisdictions. Now that Barbados Municipal Court's handling the fines for parking, we wanted to put these changes into place to make us similar to the other jurisdictions that go through the Barbados Municipal Court and get handled by the Barbados Prosecutors. The other issue, it's more of a proactive measure because, as I understand it, we haven't written a parking ticket since we got rid of our Mayor's Court, and that's probably, what, two and a half, three years now? It's been a while.
Wow.
So we don't write a lot of parking tickets. The biggest issue we used to have was at the Plaza with the fire lanes, and I think that was addressed by the fines that were put in place by council a while back with the reconfiguration of the Plaza. Now, all the stripped-down in front of the Acme portion of it is no longer a fire lane, so they really got rid of a lot of the fire lanes. You can park down there now. So this is really just proactive, bring us in alignment with the other communities. It actually reduces some of the fines we had in the past because those other communities charged less than we did, but we really don't, as a practical issue, write tickets for this. So it's more just to bring us in line in case we have to in the future.
And for the public's information, what we're looking at is $20 for the initial fine if it's paid within three days, and then it goes up to 25 after the three days, and then 30 after 30 days. Do we have any idea what they are? Well, we haven't done it in so long that...
Yeah, I can find out if there's existing ones for all of these levels, and we can get that over to council. That's fine. I don't know offhand, but I can get those to you. I thought there was some numbers in the codifieds. I'm just not sure what they are.
I mean, these all look pretty consistent, with the exception, of course, of the handicapped parking.
That's by revised codes.
That's revised codes.
That's by revised codes.
Yeah.
And this is referring to, unless it's otherwise provided, in Chapters 452, 454, and 1640. I don't believe we have a 454. I couldn't find it.
I'll double-check that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll double-check that.
Anyone else?
Justin, if I could, on conducting business from parked vehicles. What is that talking about?
I mean, I could probably think of some things you could do from a parked vehicle, but I don't know offhand what they're trying to address there. I'll find out what the officers mean by that.
Okay. That and the parking on park property or oakleaf area prohibited. I mean, there's parking lots there, so they park on the parking lots, but...
Yeah, I don't think that's what they're intending. I think it's...
I'm sorry?
It's probably not what they're intending, is not parking in the parking lot. I'll find out what areas they... Yeah. I didn't write these, so it's really, I can convey it back to you. I can get the information and get it back to you, but I don't know the answers offhand.
I'm guessing it means you can't pull up onto the park property off the parking lot and park up there.
Yeah.
The grass.
In the grass, right. That's my guess, but I'll confirm that.
Okay.
So I make a motion to add this to council's, to add ordinance 005, 2019, to council's next agenda for January 28.
And this can go for three readings, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter B, Budget Amendment. Ms. Whipke?
Okay. We had to make several amendments to our budget from last year, and as the first one on there is for adding an employee to the health insurance plan. As I understand it, this is a current employee whose situation has changed, and now they need to pick up the insurance from us?
That's correct.
And that would be an increase of $37,500?
Mine says $36,500.
It's going from 36 to 5 to 74, which is a 37.5 increase.
Thirty-seven, five, yeah.
Okay. That's what confused me when I first looked at it, too. Then waterline engineering for the Akron-Wadsworth Loop, that's an increase of $114,500. And this is the one that we've been talking about.
Yeah, this is the 261 waterline that we've been discussing for a while coming down Cleveland-Masslin Road. As we were designing it, we thought, you know, we've been told it's advantageous. Really, with any water system, you want to have a loop, and right now on Greenwich, we have a stub, right? So they told us that it was better to loop the system together, so you have a continuous way to serve the property in case there's a break somewhere along the way.
Is part of the reason for this also, are we applying for grants and things that it would, that we would need to have this money, at least in the budget, in order to apply for the grant?
Not this particular...
Not this one?
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
Not this particular project.
Okay, all right. I was confusing that with something else. Okay.
There are two other loop, two other loop projects that will be coming for council, for OPWBC funding.
Yes, okay.
And number three is for various improvements at an increase of $225,000. What exactly are those?
So if you remember last year, at the end of the year, we made some transfers to the, for lack of improvement, the land improvement fund. So one of the improvements, we're looking to make City Hall handicap accessible. Currently, we do not have the push buttons, and we are challenged for folks with disabilities to access City Hall. So $75,000 of that money will be used to improve City Hall. The football, excuse me, I'm trying to get rid of this before it started.
Sad time of year.
Yeah, I know. So there was $90,000 of that money was dedicated to football field, the football field lighting, which actually will improve park lighting. The football team has asked for lighting for several years, and it's a project that will benefit the city and the park. And then lastly, there was, I thought there was $75,000 for the pathways, but apparently it's only $50,000 for the pathways, for our portion of the pathways for our grant match.
That's the path here in...
In Columbia Woods, yes. And I just want to say, council, that's the money that was transferred last year. This is money that we didn't spend out of the budget. It's part of our, you know, one-time capital improvements with money that we didn't use in the budget. What we'd like to do is identify if we, when we don't spend our money in our budget season, to take and proportionately spread that money out, which I think you'll be receiving a policy on that in the very near future, of how we want to allocate those dollars going forward for, like, one-time capital improvements that we would only do in the following year if we had the money to do it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got several questions, just off what Mr. Fowler just said. Maybe I'm confused. I always, was always my understanding, when a budget year ended, any of the reserves went to the bottom line, and then we rebudgeted out of that. So where is the leftovers that you're talking about?
So, so, I apologize. We, we want to have 30% of what our general fund expends in a year in cash, and that number is about 2.3, 2.3 million. So when the budget year ended, we had an excess of 2.3. And what we said is 30% cash, and we want to put some in the rainy day fund. So we put some money in the rainy day fund, and we want to put some money towards our compensated absences, which are future liabilities, sick time vacation for retirees. And then after we make those distributions, anything we have left, we need to look at one-time capital improvements. So we did that last year. We put 150 in rainy day. I'm thinking it was 150, but somewhere in that neighborhood.
It increased it to, whatever the amount was, I think it increased the amount to 300,000.
So there's 300,000 in rainy day. We put some money in our compensated absence fund, and this allocation of 225 is everything above and beyond 2.3 million. So we have 2.3 million in cash in our general fund. And then we did our rainy day distribution in our compensated absence fund.
Okay, so I've got several questions here, but I guess as a, was council aware of all these moves?
These council, council passed, that was the ordinance we passed at the year-end for the year-end transfers, and included rainy day, compensated absences, land improvement, the 410 fund. We do, I don't think we did any road. We maybe authorized road. I don't think we actually transferred road. And then, yeah, so that was an ordinance that council passed. Mr. Messner can only move money from the general fund based on council authorization.
I don't remember a discussion about rainy day. Perhaps I forgot, or...
Yeah, it's okay. We can pull, let's, we could pull out that ordinance and just go over it. Not tonight, because we don't, yeah, we don't have it in front of us, but we can go over what was passed last year and then how that money was moved based on council authorization.
Okay, so I'll move on to my other questions, then. When we were having budget conversations, when we were looking at, I think it was the police, a lot more was budgeted for insurance than what we had spent in the past. And I thought the reasoning was, in case an employee were to get married or their status would change, that this would be covered. But now we're asking, we've had a change, and we're asking for more money for a budget. I just would like explanation on that.
Mr. Towesley, you're referring to the police where we said they budgeted it at?
Right.
This is for an office worker?
I understand, but I assume that was budget-wide, the way we handled things. So I'm just curious, if it isn't, why do we do that for the police and we don't do the other? I'm just curious why we're doing this at this point.
Are we talking health insurance here or property liability?
He's asking about the increase that's being requested in this budget appropriation. If in other departments, we create a buffer for stat, employee status changes for health insurance, why didn't we do that for this employee? And I think the answer, I'll let you speak, because you know the circumstances. It's a pretty small department, and no one anticipated a change in status, whereas the police department has a lot of employees that that status can change.
And it happened after the fact, for one thing. It was late in December and that, so we didn't have time to react to it.
Okay. And then another question I have, when we were going over the budget, and I apologize, I don't have the number exactly. I think our revenues and our spending were like between 100 and 2,000 separating. It was tight. So here we have a bunch of money moving. Where is this money coming from?
It's, as Mr. Fowler explained, the general fund has money in it, cash money left over in it, and it was in the excess. Actually, we were up around $3 million, and we wanted to bring that down to 2.3 million. So that's the money that was actually moved. Carryover expenses? Yeah. And the carryover balances that we have, those, if they weren't used in the budget lines and that, those all go to the bottom line. So the general fund, basically at the end of the year, comes up with additional cash that was not used in the budget lines, various budget lines through all the departments. Does that kind of help?
I think it does. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm just misunderstanding in the past.
The difference, Mr. Towesley, is when I budget, I budget to have a surplus, but basically, depending the ebbs and flows of how revenues come in, it's just a projection in that. And as I've explained in the past, I always project revenue low, expenses high, and hope for the reverse, and that's basically what happened. We had more money actually come in, so there was more money in the general fund at the end of the year, and we were able to do some of these things. So just because I say we're going to have $100,000 on the bottom line, that's a number that I'm striving to project, but it's probably going to be a, revenue is probably going to be a whole lot more than that.
Okay, so for my benefit, we're, like, coming this fall, where would I see that when we talk about the budget? That you guys said this year was $3 million.
Well, you can see it in your cash position report that I send you every month.
Okay.
If you look at your very first line, it's the general fund, and go clear over to the right, the ending balance, and that will tell you how much cash is actually in that. And you can do that for all the funds. Go right down, you can see the funds and what they are. Go clear over to the right-hand side of the report, go down those numbers, and that tells you how much cash is actually in that fund at the particular month in.
Does it show when they actual budget the proposal? Is that number reflected in that budget? Because I missed it, and I'm just wondering how I...
So when you look at the...
By my own ignorance, but...
Yeah, when you look at the revenue and the expense budget that gets proposed to council, Mr. Messner makes a policy of always budgeting revenues conservatively, so we're going to under-budget revenues a little bit to, just in case something, you know, we could have an economic downturn this year and everything goes to crap. We don't know. And then expenses, we also try to be conservative, but we try to be realistic. We don't want to under-guess our expenses. If you look at the year-end reports that are sent out, we had revenues that were about $450,000 in excess of what we anticipated for last year. So we collected about $450,000 more in revenues, taxes. Those are the revenues or taxes. And if you look at our expense that was budgeted, we were about $800,000 under in expense. That's a little bit distorted because we had a transfer ordinance at the end of the year, but essentially, we were a little bit under in expenses, and we were over in revenues, which created that surplus. So I think that's, and it would show in the cash report, but you got to look at the revenue and the expense and the cash all, sort of all together. But when we're, when we're presenting budgets to council, we still want to be conservative on revenues, and we want to, we want to have expenses that we think we're going to spend. And so that's why those margins are a little tighter. And if everything goes right, then hopefully you have some leftover at the end of the year, which luckily we did, we did last year.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then finally, number four, sidewalks for the school on Easton and Cleveland-Masslin for an increase of 155,000.
So one thing we've talked about administratively is, you know, we have some projects going on in Cleveland-Masslin Road. We want those projects to include sidewalks. We should match those sidewalks to the school. One, we should be trying to make sure our schools have some walkability, at least in close proximity. And then, secondly, there are a lot of people that walk Eastern, Easton, sorry, get those two, Floridian slip, Easton Road, and the idea was to put one sidewalk down Easton in our right-of-way to allow people to walk from the school to Greenwich Road.
That would be on the east side, then?
We haven't determined which side that would be. It's to be determined, but more than likely, that's where it would be. But we have some work to do once we get the allocation.
If not, they'd have to cross at Panther Way to the other side, to the west side.
And just wanted to make it clear that this was, this Fund 17, or 440, these were not transfer funds. These were funds that were already on deposit with the city. Those were carried over from, we can't even tell, it's been a long time they've been sitting there unused, under the road program fund designation. So we're deploying those funds that have been unused for a while to do this.
Is there, are there any grants or anything that we can apply for to help with that or to...
So what our thought was, the first allotment was, or the first allocation, was for us to show that we, in good faith, are trying to implement our Safe Russell School program. There were some efforts to procure some Safe Russell School funding in the past, but due to our limited accessibility in our school travel plan, we didn't have the luck, or success in acquiring those funds. The goal is to do a capital outlay, show our, show our effort to make our school travel plan effective, and then subsequently apply for the grant money on the other side. The Safe Russell School money, just so you know, is 100% grant money. Very few grants are 100%, but that one is 100%.
Any thoughts of the future in going the other way towards Brentwood?
Yes.
And hooking into their...
Yeah, because the intermediate school is...
Right.
But we only had 100 and...
Right.
So we were just trying to use the money we had, but not all of it, and try to start a program.
It's good to get it started.
You got to start somewhere, was our attitude.
Yep.
Wouldn't this also be kind of tied with the C1 district we're looking at? Because I believe that says sidewalks all through that as well.
Yes.
And just want to reemphasize again the point, the fact that all of these projects are just being appropriated. Contracts still have to come back to council. You still have to authorize everyone separately, so there's nothing being approved today. It's just appropriating that funds, should we have a project that moves forward, that would come back before council.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? But this time, I make a motion to add this to council's agenda for January 28 for first reading. Is there a big rush for this?
Make a motion to add this.
Can it go to three readings or...
Or at least two?
Mr. Messner for the health insurance?
I need the health insurance before the end of the month.
This is, this is all one ordinance, correct?
Yeah. We could separate them out. That makes council feel better, but we would like that, I think the health insurance is the, is the critical piece.
Is council comfortable waiving second and third on this? I mean, I am.
Well, most of it is already really tied to something we're doing.
I would say we just waive second and third.
These still have to be brought forward and lowered down, so...
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Just to be clear, Mr. Towesley, the healthcare does not, employees under the collective bargaining agreement...
Right.
Okay, I just, just wanted to make sure that you didn't think that was coming back.
Yeah, the other, the other things, though, Mr. Towesley, the other projects all have to come back forward to council, yeah.
Any expenditure over, over $10,000 has to come to council.
So at this time, I'll remove my motion and make a motion to put this on council's agenda for January 28, waiving second and third readings, emergency language. I'll second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter C, reapportment of Sandy Chrysant. Mr. McLoone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is, Sandy Chrysant's currently on our, a representative on the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals, and she would like to be reappointed to that for another three-year term. So this is a resolution to confirm that reapportment. And it looks like we could go three readings because it expires February 28, so we can do three readings on this, so...
Is this, would this be her second or her third term?
I think it's her second.
It's second.
Her second.
Was the first one a full term or just a partial?
I think it was a partial.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And this is a three-year term?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, you know...
I know it's early, but we just wanted to put it out there, give you plenty of time and do three if you need to. Correct.
I mean, I know Sandy, and she's a fine person, and I'm sure she does a great job, so...
I just don't know where she finds the time sometimes.
I know, right?
But that's good. She's doing it for us. Very good appointment. Okay, if I have nothing else, I'd like to put this for its first reading on the next January 28 meeting.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Karren?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Letter D, Application for Renewal of Agricultural Districts, and that is Mr. Gaynor.
Thank you. Just a resolution to approve the renewal of agricultural land located 4044 Summit Road in an agricultural district. This is something that comes up every five years, I believe, each individual parcel. And Bestmar Farms, Windfall Reserve, whoever owns it, has made the application, and I believe we should be having the public hearing on the 28th, if I'm not mistaken. And as I said, it's something that, it's a commonplace thing, and as I, I had forgot exactly where that was, and I'd looked it up a few minutes ago, and I see that it's, it's just off of Summit there. So it's sort of a everyday thing that comes up, and if there's any discussion, we can listen to it.
I think both of these are not first-time applications, right? They've been renewed a number of times, yeah.
Yes, okay.
And then we will have a first reading then on the 28th in the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
In the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Yes, I move to put them on the agenda for the 28th.
Second, then.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Karren?
Yes.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
All right. Letter E, Property Maintenance Code Update. I, that falls to my committee. I know that we had talked a little bit last year. I know some people had mentioned that some things need to be looked at, and I know the administration had mentioned some things need to be looked at. I wanted to get it on here to just start the discussion and what it is that council members have heard from community members, that they find troubling. I know the biggest complaints that I've had is, and I'm sure everybody's had the same things, in the spring, it's uncut lawns and garbage around people's houses are the main things, and the ability to enforce those. I think it's very difficult under our current code to enforce those. There's a number of steps that have, that we have to go through. So those are the things that, that in my estimation are most urgent. What I'd like to do is maybe take this in bites, bite-sized pieces if we can, rather than trying to change the entire code. Any discussion... Any discussion or any suggestions from anyone else as to things maybe we should be looking at specifically?
Junk cars.
Junk cars, those types of things.
Mr. Breamans here, if you wouldn't mind, question for you. What do you hear the most out there from residents, and what do you see the most from being involved every day out there?
Probably the same complaints that you've heard, property maintenance issues, whether it be not maintaining the property as far as junk cars, grass, siding, roofs, just could be a whole gamut of issues. And we don't confuse the, the junk cars is a, is actually a zoning. Part.
Okay.
Property maintenance is separate from zoning. So you have a junk vehicle portion in your zoning code, you could also have, that also would come under the grass. Property maintenance more deals with the actual home and, we'll say, pest issues, mice, rats.
Would that, would that include people who might have just a lot of stuff stacked, stacked up around the house, you know, they've got, I don't know, it looks like they, like they cleaned out their garage and they never got rid of everything, right? It's just stuff stacked up, or there's piles of lumber in the backyard that have been sitting there for years. Is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Well, it's a twofold thing. I mean, obviously you need both to make one good product.
Okay.
Good property maintenance is a result of a good zoning code.
Okay.
It's a twofold answer there, I guess. You couldn't zero in on just one specific thing and add, and expect for it to cure the whole problem. It's, it's a bringing together the whole product together. I mean, it was best explained to me as, you know, if, if, I don't wanna say you have strict property maintenance, but if you have property maintenance, it then produces good zoning ordinances as well. I mean, and you comply in both categories then.
Have you, have you found that it's difficult to enforce our, our zoning codes and, and property maintenance codes?
In, in some aspects, yeah. It's, I mean, it's, what's there is, is fine, it's just it lacks to bring in a whole product.
Okay.
You know, it's, you still have control. Whatever you do comes from you guys, so it's, you still have control.
Sure, and, and I understand that, but, you know, we, I don't, I haven't, I haven't read the zoning code in a long time, and I've probably never read the whole thing all the way through.
Sure.
But I do know that I'll, you know, I'll be in my yard, or I'll get a call from somebody and they'll stop by and say, have you seen such and such? What are you gonna do about that? And so I get where you're coming from, but at least from my point of view, I need to know what we need to do to make it more workable. You know, you see what I'm saying? So if we have to have a, a holistic approach to, let's just say, yards, right? Mowing, junk cars, trash in the yards, pests and stuff like that, then I guess we need to know from you, what, what do we need to change in both the zoning code and the property maintenance code to make that happen? And I'm not asking you to answer that question tonight, I'm just, that's kind of where we're coming from.
Absolutely, I totally understand and respect that. I, I will say problem areas are motor vehicles.
Okay.
And in our zoning code, we have unlicensed.
Right.
Motor vehicles that I can enforce. But, but that's at a clear sight, maybe from the road.
Right.
Those generally aren't the majority of our problems. Our problems are where behind the house where there's fourteen of them.
Yeah.
And I don't have permission to go on that property unless I'm invited, you know, to go look. So when the neighbor calls from beside the house and says, man, I look out my side window and as all I see is, you know, a nineteen thirty-seven Ford dump truck that's rotted into the ground. That falls then in a different category that we need to.
So, so we.
We need to work on that aspect of that.
So, so you, currently you have two choices. It's either you can see it from the road and possibly do something about it, or somebody has to report it.
Correct, correct.
And, and.
You know, I tried to address, you know, we have problem areas, I tried to open up dialogue, but once the dialogue is over, that seems to be where the problem.
Well, you know, and, and my opinion is, I, I don't, I don't know that we as a city need, if there's a problem that we need to be coming out guns blazing with the enforcement attitude right off the bat. I mean, I think that we need to try and work with the property owner because, you know, this still is a country where we have property rights and it's our property, and we should try to work with them first and move from there. So I don't have any problem with that, it's just.
I, and absolutely. I think we, we need to develop a minimum standard, what our minimum standard should be, whether it be in property maintenance or in zoning codes, however you wanna look at that. And, I mean, we have to protect everybody that's, and most of the property maintenance is, is all for safety and protection of our residents and our families, so.
Right.
Key things, vehicles, chickens. We have a, you know, that's a new thing. Everybody wants a chicken and those, we don't have anything in place for that. And our, I guess our answer to it is, we follow the county guidelines. Well, so when someone breaks the county guidelines, who are we gonna call?
Right.
Well, I don't, you know, the county's a wonderful operation and everything, but they got their own things, they want us.
You mean, they don't have time to come out and look at people's chickens?
They want us to police our own problems, so.
Right.
That is.
Okay. All right.
Bill, what's your thought on like a point of sale, like when a person does leave Norton? We look over that maintenance before the new homeowner comes in, that way we kinda cleaned up before, it's always a good time, I know a lot of cities do that.
I think that is maybe something that could be discussed on down the road. Definitely something you should look at, but I think before you would even do that, you need to have that in place and, you know, just get accustomed to a standard before you worry about what happens when they leave.
Okay.
It's, it has pros and cons, just like anything else. Our, our property maintenance now consists of two pages, and it, it has paragraphs that are strong, but it doesn't, it doesn't have a complete package. So I think if you can develop a complete package, that it would be very, it sounds worse than it really is. I can honestly tell you that.
Okay.
I'd offer that I would be available to discuss individually, any questions you may have.
Yeah, I can tell you as the lawyer, what I get a lot is, we get this complaint and everyone sort of agrees it's something that should be taken care of, and there's no enforcement mechanism. We have no ability to do it, and that's why I give, I tell Bill a lot, there's, there's no enforcement mechanism unfortunately. And it appears what we do with our property maintenance code is we, we cherry picked a couple provisions from what everyone else adopts as a whole, not saying that's what we should do, but that's what everyone else does, is international property maintenance code. We, we went through and said, okay, we like the three provisions here, here, and here, so we'll take them and we'll, we'll take them out of context and we'll put them into our code. And I, I understand the sentiment behind that, it just doesn't give you a lot of, and that's fine, that's how council wants to do it, but it just doesn't give you a lot of robustness in how you're gonna enforce your code.
So is, is your thought that perhaps we should look at a, a complete revamp of the property maintenance code?
Well, the easiest thing to do would be to revamp it, right?
Okay.
Instead of cherry picking it, but that's really up to council, I mean, it's.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily afraid to do that, I just, I know that we've tried to do things like that in the past.
It's controversial.
Where we've changed it wholesale, and it's just been difficult.
Sure.
I've got a question relating to that. It's really, I need to be educated on this, I brought up the subject and then I felt, well, I need to know more.
Well, that's why we have committees, right?
Yes. So my question is, is when you adopt a property maintenance code, is it universal for all areas of the city within the city limits, or do you have anything that would follow certain zoning areas to make variances and allowances for where you have more rural area versus more city area?
Your, your property maintenance is gonna be more, it's, it serves everyone, okay? Your zoning code will go in to the individual neighborhoods, depending on your zoning. It's, I mean, the property maintenance would be a minimum standard. It would be, as we know it now, let's just say you decide that you're gonna sell your home. I wanna buy it. And I have somebody, in order to get any financing, I'm gonna have to have somebody come take a look at your house. Well, it has to meet minimum standards, and probably even above and beyond that, once you get an inspection for financing. But just that basic minimum of, no glass is broke, you know, as simple things as a handrail. It's, it sounds kind of intrusive, but it's just, it's just safety stuff, you know? Smoke alarms, fire alarms, how can we argue that? I mean, that's, that's just, it's, you know, when you look at it and you say, man, they require you to have a smoke alarm outside a bedroom. On the big grand scheme of things, I don't think, I mean, I don't think there's anybody here that wants to have the conversation after the fact that someone who didn't have a smoke alarm in front of a bedroom.
So when you talk about some things are more appropriate to zoning code, I guess the example of everybody wants a chicken now, or two, or three, or ten, that would be more appropriate to zoning because, you know, if you're living out on, on the south side of town where there's more property and it's more rural, that's appropriate, but if it's in, I don't know, Mount Vernon or Norton Acres, it's not appropriate.
That would be, I mean, just to use our law director's word there, that's where you wanna cherry pick.
Right.
Right.
Fix things here and there.
And that's more about the use of the property.
Gotcha.
I mean, people get, people rightfully are protective of the use of their property.
Gotcha.
And the property maintenance is not dealing with the use of the, having broken windows isn't use of your property, that's just having a broken window.
It's just safety and appearance.
Right.
Okay. All right. I guess what I'd like to propose is, is that perhaps if we can take a look at a couple similar cities and see what they have in place, and just look at those.
Yeah, is there city, I mean, would they get any recommendations?
I don't know.
What you think is a similar situated city and?
Wadsworth's similar, Copley's similar. Wadsworth has rural areas, they have business district, they have city limits.
Clinton, I guess, I don't know.
New Franklin, Clinton.
Yeah. Just so we, so we have kind of a leaping off point, I, you know.
Sure.
There's no rush to do this, but I know that it's something that I've heard from people that they have complaints about, and, well, but we also need to be careful that we don't overstep and make sure that people are.
Sure.
Able to use their property because it is their property.
Biggest complaints that I hear along with the junk cars and the grass and stuff like that is when somebody's poor upkeep of their property starts to infringe on the property value of their neighbors. That's, that's what I hear as the biggest complaint.
Especially when you're trying to sell that property.
Yeah. Yeah. So if, if for the next work session, maybe we could get something to compare and, and start working from there. And Mr. Breaman, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, you're welcome to come if you want to, I don't know that you need to come every time, but when we need some input, maybe we can have you come back?
I would be happy to.
Right. Thank you.
If anybody needs, wants to discuss it one-on-one, I'd be happy as well.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest anybody that has the time to please schedule an appointment with Mr. Breaman, so we can, so you have, each have an opportunity to.
Okay.
Discuss your concerns. But I think when we get to that point, we really need to solicit public input.
Yeah.
So we can hear what they have to say, but they can also hear what and why we think this is the most appropriate action. Whatever, whatever action that is, I think we need to make sure we're soliciting that input from the, from the constituency.
I know that for some things, and it might be, it might be zoning code that we are required to have public hearings.
That's right.
It would, probably wouldn't be a bad idea for a maintenance code either.
You could always have a public hearing.
To let people come in and, and advertise those so that we can get the public's input.
If I could.
Uh-huh.
I was gonna suggest, Mr. Fowler brought it up there, that we take two-week period or three-week period or whatever the amount of time, and have the public submit written, not recorded, or not on the street corner, but written suggestions as to how to correct the zoning and building housing codes in their area. I, for one, am not gonna go around, I don't feel it's my duty as a councilman, I'm not gonna go around and look for violations of the zoning codes and such, that's not my, that's not where I belong. But, and, and I don't even think it's Bill's job to look for violation codes. I think it's a citizen's job to call and first of all, make a verbal complaint, and if it's doable, handle it verbally, but if not, I think if we get the citizens sending in written suggestions, I mean, I could think of a hundred right offhand, junk car in the yard, in my neighbor's front yard, for instance. If my neighbor has a junk car in my front, in his front yard, and I have a maculent, clean, trimmed, nice, clean lawn, I don't want that junk car next door to me, not for a variety of reasons. I don't like the look of junk cars, for one thing, but you know what I'm getting at, it could be any, anything, I'm just using it as an example, but maybe that person who lives next door would like to suggest that we now no longer allow junk cars that have no wheels, no motors, and nothing attached to them that's gonna make them run down the road, sitting in the front yards of our, of our homes. And it's just a commonsensical thing. So I'm hoping that if you suggest that to the citizens, you'll get, I think, hundreds of suggestions, and all of those suggestions could be looked at and, and come up with a, a reasonable amount of housing maintenance.
I think the more input we get from the public, the better. So let's, what we'll do is we'll put this back on to the next work session. In the meantime, we can get some.
Yeah, comparable cities.
Some comparables, and, and then we can talk about it a little bit more then. Any other discussion regarding this particular item? Okay, then we'll go to letter F, chapter twelve seventy-nine update, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, this is the C-one zoning, new zoning suggested regulations that was, came up with the help of insight and administration, and we, I believe, presented this to the planning commission in August, I believe it was. And so far, I'd suggest that it go back to them as soon as possible in a meeting, and let them come up with their suggestions and ideas on it, and then get it to council so we can get something done with it. It's really, I, I don't really understand why it hasn't been done already, I.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, under the zoning code, that zoning amendments can be initiated three ways, one by the property owner, two by the planning commission, three by council. So this is one of the ways we can initiate zoning ordinance. With the widening of Cleveland Maslin Road going through, the amount of money we spent on infrastructure, putting in sewer lines, that we thought, and then the time and effort that was spent coming up with the zoning classification, C-one, it all goes together with the widening. So the thought is to have council, if it is willing to do so, initiate that amendment. It still goes back to planning commission for recommendation, it starts a sixty-day clock where they have to review, recommend, and then come back, comes back to council in order to consider again fully.
So what we would be doing by this legislation is actually just referring it to planning commission.
That's right.
And.
For a recommendation, then it comes back.
Starting that clock running.
Hold the public hearing, all the things you talked about for a zoning code amendment would still have to happen.
Okay, okay.
And this has to go to sixty days?
Planning commission has up to sixty days to consider and make a recommendation. Uh, planning commission has up to 60 days to consider and make a recommendation.
So, it could be less.
If they don't do anything during that time, they have that right. They don't have to do anything, but they have 60 days to act.
Then it would refer back to us if they don't do anything.
Whether there'd be a recommendation or not, it would come back to you.
And we should move ahead on it or whatever.
Whatever council chooses, that, that's.
Yeah. And this is different from the last time? How?
Last time of what?
That they've had this in front of them since last summer.
I think there were some additional edits that Mr. Yeah.
There were some, sorry, there were some edits that the planning commission had made a recommendation on. They hadn't had, they have not had meetings, several meetings. Like, I think they canceled like the last four. This really is a priority. I do, I don't know that you all got the email. I have maps for everyone. If you didn't, I apologize. And we, we really want to get this moving because we have some, you know, we, we had an issue where proposal wouldn't have had to go to the zoning board of appeals. And those people had to spend money to, to do that. So, we're, we're just trying to, you know, move it along.
So, really what this does is it allows us to kind of put a finite time period when we can get, we can do whatever we're going to do with it one way or the other.
Yep, that's right.
Is really what it comes down to.
Right.
Is there a way, while this is being addressed to Mr. Fowler's case there, if a business, individual, whoever has something regarding zoning that they have to go before the zoning appeals and pay that money out, is there a way that we can basically kind of put those funds on hold while it's being addressed? Go ahead and address it now. That way we're not under any type of time crunch to get something in place to make sure that it's correct, at the same time not inadvertently costing somebody extra dollars?
You, because, because the C1 doesn't exist in our zoning code, we really don't have any flexibility with that. What I would suggest if someone made application, we have a certain situation that's ongoing right now and my concern is, personally, I don't feel it's in the right location, but I do not have any ability to stop what's going to happen. And this would give me the authority to stop the construction of a new building in the city. Not that I want to stop construction. I don't want it to, I don't want it to appear that way. But what, what you've maybe have heard from me over and over is we want the right use in the right location. And another auto parts store in the square is not the right use in the right location. And we're about to get one. And there's nothing that I can do in our zoning code. This would have prohibited that.
And under this, the, the overlay would have, would have.
Would have, would have prohibited the auto parts store. Not that I want to, understand.
Again.
I am not trying to dictate what is developed, but we want, want the right use in the right location.
You mean, we would like plan development?
Yeah.
Sometimes too much control is not a good thing, but not having any control isn't a good thing either.
This kind of strikes a balance there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plan development is a good thing.
If I could, planning commission has, if I'm not mistaken, they have 60 days to, to, to act on something that was sent to them, correct? Well, this was sent in August.
Wasn't sent from council.
It wasn't sent by council. In order to, in order for that 60 days to apply, it would have to be an application from council. What we did initially was to put it through planning commission. They were going to make their own application. They were going to initiate it on their own. They just haven't completed that process yet.
So, then we need to suggest that this goes directly to the planning commission.
Right.
Not to us next week or something. Goes to the planning.
Well, it goes to us next week and we pass the ordinance and then it goes to them.
Correct, I understand.
Right, yep.
But then it should go to planning and they have 60 days to work on.
That starts the clock ticking.
If planning commission had a meeting next week and passed the version that was in front of them, it'd come back to you, right?
Right.
Even before you acted, right?
Because the reason I'm asking these questions, this, I've read this several times and there are a lot of questions that I have on it. And, and it's very, very complicated, a lot of the stuff in there. And, and I attended the planning commission when they were discussing it. And there was numerous questions. Charlotte and I both was there. There were a lot of questions they didn't have answers for. And I don't know if they followed up on getting those answers or not. If they haven't, they should have. And, and if they've asked for those questions to be answered, I hope we answered them. And, and like you said, they haven't had the meetings, so I don't really know. I was, I was hoping they would have had meetings to discuss all this. And there were several suggestions about different things made at the last meeting that they discussed. And I've went through this so many times and I'm, every time I go through it, I pick out another question or another.
Sure.
Something. So, it's very complicated and they need to have that 60 days probably if they haven't moved forward any at all, well, since they've had the last meeting. They need to have that 60 days. And then we need to look it over very carefully, very carefully. And I'm in favor of the whole project. I mean, the whole zoning thing. I, I don't see a thing wrong with it, but there's a lot of questions as to the method and the steps involved and everything.
Yeah, I think we need to take care of this next Monday so we can get it over to them and then it can, when it comes back to us and we can, we can have all those discussions that we need to have and then go from there.
So, I need to move to.
Yeah.
Put her on next week's agenda then, correct?
Yes, yes.
And waving readings and emergency language?
Yeah, I think so, so we can move it along.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Carrot?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Anything else to come before the committee of the whole?
Just, just so for clarification, under the agricultural district, there's actually two of them. I know that.
Right.
They specifically talked about the one over on Summit, but there is another one as Cyberling. So, I'll make sure that that is included in this as well.
Yes, I thought so.
And that's the property on Heemtown and Greenwich. No.
Cyberling?
Cyberling.
Yeah, the whole Cyberling.
Yes, yeah.
I just, they're both, they're both included. I just want to make sure that we have them both in there and that.
Yes.
Okay.
They will be.
They have to be separate.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be separate ordinances, but, or resolutions or whatever, but yes. They're already listed as resolution eight and resolution nine separately.
Forty-one seventeen Greenwich Road.
Yeah, yeah.
A hearing will be on the same night for both of them, correct?
That's correct. They were both advertised on the 17th.
Right.
But I think what the mayor's asking, did he make a motion for both?
Yes.
I did. If I didn't, I meant to, so.
That's what he's asking, just to make sure.
Yeah. Cause there was just, there was topics.
Should we revisit that?
Discussion. There was topics of discussion on the one specific.
Right, right.
And I just wasn't sure if both of them were actually.
Carrie, do you remember that he used language, putting both on?
He referenced both of them.
Okay.
And I, and I can make it specific to be the resolution numbers.
That's fine.
So, that's clear there's two.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Basically, it was a consent agenda.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
I kind of have the same question about chapter 1279. Was there a motion?
Okay, yeah, so that, that's what I was going to say.
There was a motion.
There was a motion. I didn't actually really hear.
I didn't hear a second.
I didn't hear a second.
Did you second, Mr. Karen?
I second that.
He did, okay. I know sometimes I don't hear him because.
Sorry.
There's too much going on up here.
What happens when you get old?
Well, that, that too. So, there was a proper motion second and a proper vote, so that'll be on. Alright, is there anything else to come before committee of the whole? Any further discussion tonight for things?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I've got a question. This may not be the right timing for it, but since we had a little bit more than a normal snowfall this past weekend, probably the complaints that most of you got, which I did too, were about snow removal or where it got put. But I think actually as a comment, the city in Norton did an exceptional job. Mr. Hesse and his crew did a wonderful job as comparison to the, compared to the other cities, which I kept hearing people didn't do quite as well. My question is, I spoke to Mr. Hesse and he's not making a recommendation at this point in time, but I'd like to consider possibly in the future some part-time drivers that might be available because they are not able to fill all the shifts and move all the trucks at any given time in an emergency when we're hit like this. They don't have anyone to really call in. And just to suggest to look at in the future.
I agree with what you said about him doing a good job. I meant to mention that earlier. I've already spoke to Mr. Hesse and gave him my compliments. I went around my entire ward and every single street was spotless. I mean, clean, as clean as it could possibly be. After Fletcher was the last one, they did an excellent job all the way around the city as far as I'm concerned. And everybody should be not complaining, but applauding.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, we went out yesterday, we went to Wadsworth. Wadsworth's roads were really not in good shape at all. You could, I mean, you could tell as soon as you cross the, the line that our, and we went up 261. 261 was, was wet, but it was clear. And on Wadsworth, it was still snow covered. I went in to work today in Akron. And Akron is a mess. I mean, it is a mess. Now, having said that, I want people to realize that we had difficulty with salt this year. You know, we had a lot of snowfall in a short period of time. We had a number of crews out. I think they were working around the clock. And yes, we clear main streets first. That's for safety reasons, for safety squads. And, and for those reasons, they're more heavily traveled. And I, I believe the trucks are still out clearing the side streets and stuff. So, the city does the best it can, especially, you know, when you've got a really, I mean, that's, I think that's the largest snowfall I can remember for, for a couple of years in this area.
At least.
It, it was a lot at one time. So, I want, I mean, I want to thank the service crew for all of the work that they put in. I apologize if people had some difficulty getting around, but you know, that unfortunately, that's what happens in northeast Ohio. We do the best we can. Mr. Fowler?
Just to address the salt issue, you know, we, we had to get to January 7th when the contracts started. So, we made it to the new contract. We, we limped along. We are now getting deliveries. So.
Good.
We should, unless we get a disastrous snowstorm for a long period of time, like a month, we should have enough salt to cover us the rest of the year. So.
Great.
We also had a couple of breakdowns. I was told some of the vehicles or plows or something and they had some problems with that and held them up a little bit. But I was really surprised when I drove around town how good the roads were. So.
They went out at four o'clock on, or excuse me, 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. And then they worked from 10 to 10, 10 to 10, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., 10 p.m. to 10 a.m., alternating shifts. So, and they were out till approximately about 7:30 last night. I think they got off the mains and went into neighborhoods and residential in preparation of work on Monday. Or, I'm sorry, it was Sunday night in preparation to, for work on Monday morning.
If I recall correctly, what is it, 21 miles of road that we actually?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three miles of road and comparatively to other municipalities, that's a lot more roads than many of them have to cover.
Twenty-three and then I don't believe, I don't, I'm not aware that the highways in, is included in that 23.
Yeah, you mean 21?
Yes.
Any, any further comment on that or, or anything else under committee of the whole? Next work session, we will be looking again at the property maintenance code. We're also going to talk a little bit about the cemetery, the tombstone repair. I know that we've been working on that a little bit to see what we can do there. Is there anything else for topics for the next work session? As they come up, we'll add them. Anything further to come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Okay, we're adjourned.